Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Mark McAdow is the pastor at First United Methodist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman John Pettis if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Please bow with me for prayer. Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for life and the blessing of this new day, a precious gift from you that we dedicate back to you for your intended purposes in our lives. We praise you for all the opportunities and promises of this new year as it unfolds. Help us to set aside our personal agendas, strategic plans, and best thinking to focus first on you and you alone. Your thoughts are wiser, your ways are higher. May we find our true selves in you, our Creator. We seek your wisdom and discernment in the significant and insignificant decisions before us today. We confess our weaknesses and limited knowledge, so we appeal to your great strength and infinite wisdom, for your joy is our strength. May our business professionals, elected officials, and spiritual leaders, our faithful citizens, work together in a spirit of unity for our common good. Lead us to care for the most vulnerable among us and protect those whose life goal is to protect and serve us all. We ask special protection these days for our firefighters risking their lives to save other lives and personal property as well. Thank you for your example of service above self, as your Son Jesus came not to be served but to serve. May each of us serve others out of love for you. After all, life is all about relationships, our relationship with you and one another. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each month, the Oklahoma City Rotary Club helps us choose one teacher in Oklahoma City to be our Teacher of the Month, and this month's winner is Courtney Keck from Putnam City West. Courtney, come on up. Let's show our appreciation to Courtney. Is this your alma mater?
Yes, I thought it was. We have a resolution unless the clerk reads it.
Whereas Courtney Keck has been named Teacher of the Month by the Putnam City Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for January 2014. Whereas Courtney has been teaching math at Putnam City West High School for seven years.
And discussion with property owners, the option of shutting down through traffic, which would greatly increase it in certain areas if we can do that. So we are looking, we're doing a A-plus-B contract that's out for bid now, or not out to bid, that's under contract right now, to have some bonus provisions in there. We've hired our right-of-way engineer to have onboard to make sure that the right-of-ways are clear as much as we can before the construction started. So we're doing three or four things to address the fact that--
One of the suggestions I would make is we spend maybe more time on the engineering aspect of it, making sure that we've identified utilities. Sometimes I think we ask those people to cut their work to the point, we don't get as completed a job as we need to get, to identify those particular possible obstruction. And I'm in. I had been on the other side of the equation some time years ago. On item A B, this is an audit report, and I just had a minor question. There was a, the auditors made quite a production about a misstatement of certain qualities of assets. And then they made a statement in their letter that there was no significant impact, that this was over a million-dollar misstatement. It seemed like that was significant to me, but maybe it's just-- Do you have any comments on that?
Basically, when they're looking at that, they're looking, and I don't recall the specific transaction on that one, but they're looking at items that are identified as we are evaluating our assets. And when we make a correction, it gets corrected in the transactions, but it's something, when we're going back into an inventory, is that we're identifying assets that may, should have been depreciated differently or recorded differently. And so when we're cleaning those up, and we've been doing, have a strong effort to try to get those cleaned up. And when we get those, then if it's a larger amount like that, they'll recognize it. And there's just a threshold that they use where they have different categories that they identify within their audit standards, whether it's called a significant deficiency or material weakness. And so it's just a recognition that it's something that we need to continue to work to make sure our asset records are accurate.
This number, because the gross number is fairly significant, over a million dollars, the actual impact on our financials--
On the overall financials is less, and that's what they're evaluating.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Pat. Any other comments on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. Is there a motion? All right, we have a motion and a second. It's like 11 items. Any additional comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight is items that require a separate vote. The first is a zoning case from Ward five. The address is 8731 South McKinley Avenue. It's currently our one single-family residential. It would be turning into a new spud. And David, we have one person who has signed up to speak.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Tim, Mr. Johnson, would you please give us a quick overview, including the modifications that you and I spoke about yesterday?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll let Ms. Lyons speak.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, on behalf of the applicant. This is a case, just to give you a brief background, we started last April, going before Planning Commission. There was a long list of protestants that had signed up. We continued the case. I met with the neighborhood several times towards the end of the meetings. The first meeting we had, there was about six people there, out of the 30 or so that had signed the petition. The second meeting, there was, the adjoining properties to the north and south of this tract of land were of most concern to the owner and to the impact that this would have on them. We met several times. We met in the homes of the people to the south. And after making considerable changes to the application, going from the extension of the personal storage use to just no buildings and a landscaped eight-foot fence that would allow for some outdoor storage and a driveway onto McKinley, that is the way the case was submitted to Planning Commission in August, and it was approved in August by Planning Commission. When we came before the council in September, there was several people that showed up in protest. And at that point, councilman asked us to continue for an extended period of time, which we did till this meeting. So we extended, continued for about three months. And during that time, we met in the, on the site, Councilman Greenwell, myself, and the applicant, or, I'm sorry, and the protesters. And there were several discussions about what they wanted to allow there, but basically the sentiment was they didn't want any change. It's, it's an R1 tract of land, it's a deep tract of R1. These were older, kind of mini ranchettes type of, very similar to the neighborhood I live in, in Bush Hills, that deep lots, septic systems, city water is the only improvement they have. But, so after that conversation, we, I did try to talk to the neighbor to the north, Mr. Jackson. Again, it was just a continuance of, we just don't want it, period. So there was no negotiation on their part. My client was out of the country for several weeks, and so there was no other attempt made to meet with the neighbors. In a conversation on the telephone before this meeting, we, I talked with Councilman Greenwell. He had heard from the neighbors that they are still adamantly opposed to this, that they want to leave it as R1. And what I had suggested to Mr. Greenwell, that we might take a two-week continuance to allow me to not address changes in the PUD document in front of you all, that allow me the opportunity to come back and make some significant changes that we read into the hearings that we had regarding access to McKinley. That was a big deal. Even though we did a traffic study, there was not a great impact, obviously compared to the big church parking lot to the east. The impact of a personal storage was minimal. But taking away that access, eliminating that access is one option. A second option would be to back off of the use from McKinley and perhaps maintain an R1 use just on the McKinley frontage that would be in line with the residences north and south of here. The problem with that is, obviously, we'd have to have a lot that's big enough to allow for septic system. There's no sewer available to extend to the site. I looked at a lift station opportunity, and that can't be done practically either. So you're faced with, the existing structure on the, on the site is inhabitable, it's in bad shape, needs to be torn down. And so you're look, you're faced with the situation of, how do I build a house? Even if the lot was at no cost or free, you cannot build a house cheaper than 80 bucks a foot, and that's less, that's more than the average resale of the common houses in the area. So that's a difficult position to be in, even if you leave it as R1. So the, if we leave it as R1, the owner would like to fence it off anyway. Since September, there's been no less than 20 citations, or, I'm sorry, not citations, but calls into the Action Center for area, this site has become a dumping ground to the neighborhood. And although the inspector, we're on a first-name basis, has shown up about 20 times out there, there was only one notice issued in that, in all those appearances. So again, we're here to ask for the continuance, and I know Ms. Elder Lyons is here, wants to move forward, so I can let her speak.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Tara Lyons?
Good morning. I'm Tara Elder Lyons, and I live two houses to the north, 8709. And in one thing, there is four houses on the block that are over $320,000. So they are some big, there's some 4,000 square foot houses there. The neighborhood complied with the meeting with Mr. Greenwell in July the 15th on the property. There was probably 15, I don't know, 15 people there, maybe? The neighborhood, we listened to the proposal. I think the bottom line is, no one wants to get commercial changes to a middle of the road little, we have two-and-a-half acre, one acre to two-and-a-half acre plots. In the middle of a property, you just don't put commercial property in the middle. And, in my opinion, you don't. So I think that's the bottom line, really. We would be glad to have a new house built there, and there is plenty of room for lateral lines. We just don't, last, okay. Mr. Johnson, eventually, we had the change in, I had it in my books, October, but you said it was September, when they got another contingent, continuance. And then I didn't get, no one in the neighborhood got any calls until last night. At, on my phone, it was, I got a call at 2:55, I was at a meeting, and then I returned Mr. Johnson's call at 4:09. And at 4:21, he came up with this new plan, that he was going to build a house on the front of the property, and on the back, he was still going to put storage units. That's the major concern, is we don't want storage units. There is a problem with water drainage. When we built our house on the back lot, there, we had to put in lines and lines and lines, lines of lateral lines because of the gumbo type nature of the property. And the people that bought our house in the back are now experiencing lots of water in their sewage system. It's, when it rains really heavily, like it did this in the tornadoes, he actually got water into his house. To mow his lawn on the two-and-a-half acres is almost impossible because of the water that runs off of the storage unit, of the existing storage units there. And we've had, he's had, in my opinion, he's had six months since July, and I have nothing against Mr. Johnson, but there's been six months that we've been dealing with this, and everything keeps getting put off, put off, put off. And I know Mr. Greenwell's a very fair man, and he wants to give everyone an opportunity, but we came, I put on my calendar, January, this date, and we're coming today, and we're gonna, we're wanting to get another continuance. The major, there is a drainage issue, and just to tell you the truth, no one, you can say we're old-fashioned or whatever, but we just don't want to change. To have huge trailers that we can look out of our windows and see people parking mobile homes, we've had a problem with promises from the other storage units that were, we, we got a bunch of promises that things would be taken care of, and they weren't taken care of. I know personally the owner, and I know that, well, it's hard to get, how do I say that nicely? Out for money, is what I'd say, bottom line. My logical assumption is, he's had, we've had enough time. I think we should just go ahead and get it, get it over with. No one, the majority of the neighborhood does not want commercial change to the, to the zoning, which, that's the bottom line.
All right. Thanks, Tara.
Thanks, Ms. Lyons. Well, I think the modifications that Mr. Johnson is making on behalf of the owner of the property is significant, and I would encourage the homeowners to use this time, this additional two weeks' time, to work with Mr. Johnson on behalf of the owner, to see if there are any additional items you'd like to see. But to maintain, or first of all, to eliminate access to McKinley Avenue, which was the main issue that the homeowners brought forth, that's going away. And then with the possibility of pushing any development further west and provide enough room for a home to be built there, should someone want to, I think that's even more of a significant modification made on behalf of the owner. If there's a flooding problem, it may or may not be attributable to the storage units, but here's a two-week period to investigate that further and see if they would be willing to assist in that issue. I'm going to use a common term such as a French drain, if that would be helpful to the property. Perhaps the owner would consider putting something along those lines. So with the potential for significant modifications, I do recommend that we postpone this for two weeks. I think the owners have came back and made substantial modifications for the benefit of the neighborhood, and I just hope the neighbors recognize that. So I would like to move for a two-week continuance.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on this item? We're voting on a deferral on item eight A. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight B is up for a final hearing today, and council has been briefed on this a couple of times already, so, on the Foster-Pet Program. Are we ready to go on this one?
Yes.
All right. Any comments or questions on eight B? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight C is being introduced today. Marcia Slaughter is going to come in and give us a presentation on this idea. It has to do with Lake Stanley Draper and the boat slips.
Right. We haven't had docks out there for a couple of years, where they were damaged during the tornado, and then we've had the period when we were rehabbing the pipeline from the Toca, and Draper was at an unusable recreational level because of that, of that rehabilitation. And Marcia, tell us where we're at.
Good morning. We have constructed 34 new boat stalls at Lake Draper, beginning a replacement process for the original stalls constructed in the '60s. These 34 stalls need a rate. They're larger than we've had historically, they're 14 by 38 feet. So today, we're introducing an ordinance to set fees of $2,760 annually or $230 a month on the average, including some monthly fees for on-season and off-season use, should people choose to run by the month. And we're proposing, introducing the ordinance today, consideration in a public meeting, a public hearing on the 21st, and adoption on the 28th of January. Happy to answer questions.
Marcia, do you have to have an annual contract, or can you rent on a monthly basis?
You can rent on a monthly basis. There'll be preference for annual contracts.
Okay.
Excuse me. How do these rates compare to what we're charging at Hefner?
They're quite a bit higher. The rates that set at Hefner were set in about 1998, and stats reviewing those rates expects to come back with some proposals for Lake Hefner as well. These, again, recover what we consider to be our costs of about $750 a year for operations and the debt service for the, for the boat stalls that we've built so far.
And these new boat stalls that you're proposing at Draper, are they covered?
Yes.
So they, we, several boats could not use them?
Some stalls will, Draper's not a great sailing light. Some stalls, there'll be options as we go forward. There'll be a total of three different installations. These are the largest of the boat docks, boat stalls.
All right. Item just being introduced today, and we'll be setting a public hearing for January 21st. It's scheduled for final adoption on January 28th. Any other comments or questions from council? All right.
I would suggest perhaps we want to combine this rate effect with the review of the rate at Hefner, so that we do them simultaneously. We're going, where there's a possibility of increasing the rates at Hefner, to make them closer to the, I would hate Hefner to have a significant advantage on paper for just a month or two, and then come back and raise their rate.
All right. We'll, we're reviewing those, but I'll try to get those timeframes coordinated.
All right. Do we have a motion on this? How about a motion on eight C to move it forward? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item eight D? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in an HP district. We have one item on the list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item at 900 Northwest 19th Street? Yeah, come on up. I will need your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm the son. My name is Joseph Topper. I live at 900 Northwest 19th.
So this is where you live?
I don't live in that.
Oh.
Do you live in the house, sir?
Yes.
Okay. I went by and looked at this yesterday, and it's just a tragedy.
It really is.
Both the house and the garage are in--
Yeah, we've been overrun with raccoons, and raccoons seem to be a continuing problem.
They can typically get in when there are holes in the roof and all sorts of other things, so--
They sort of eat their way in, I found out.
Can you share with us a plan? Do you have a strategy here?
Yes. The plan is to continue fighting with the insurance company. There's some debate on responsibility and actual causes, but I do have proof and photographs that it is being caused by raccoons.
So you filed a claim with your insurance company for raccoon damage?
Yes.
Well, the garage structure itself, I mean, I, it's a fabulous piece of property, and it's in a very important corner, and, but the garage is dangerous.
The garage is not as dangerous as it looks. Like I say, the roof, I have contacted Sears. Sears can fix the roof, repair it for around $7,000.
Okay. And do you have the money available to do that?
Well, I'm still fighting with the insurance company. Obviously, we were turned down for grants.
Okay. Well, my recommendation to Charles is going to be that we leave it on this list, and you'll need to work directly with staff. I asked this morning, and they hadn't heard from you. So it's incredibly important that you stay in close contact with our staff, let them know what your plan is. You know, our responsibility is safety, first and foremost.
Yeah, I realize that, and I appreciate that.
We have to be cautious of the neighborhood, so--
Yes.
We're going to go ahead and leave it on today, much to my chagrin, but--
Thank you.
You need to work with Charles.
Yes.
Okay? Thank you.
So you'll have 30 days to somehow satisfy Charles that you're actively working on fixing the property. And I'm sorry about your problems with the insurance company, but it's going to have to be addressed. We have--
Exactly.
--neighbors in the area are looking at us and asking for some help.
With pitchforks and torches, huh?
Possibly.
Yes.
All right.
Well, thank you.
You bet. How about a motion then on item eight E? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight F is a public hearing regarding long-term boarded structures, and we have six of them listed here. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight F? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight G? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight H is a revocable right-of-way permit to hold the Martin Luther King Jr. Day Parade on January 20th. Is there anyone here representing this event this year? All right, well, it's in wards six and seven. The two of you, want to make a motion or a second?
May I ask a question, Your Honor?
Uh-huh, sure.
When they determine the route and staging areas for this, they take into consideration all the Project 180 closure? Did you look at that?
I'm sorry, councilman, I didn't hear your question.
When they, the group here sponsoring the parade, they determine whether route and staging areas are to be, did they take into consideration, your review, did they take into consideration the impact or the effects of Project 180 construction?
Yes. And we actually work directly with Shannon Cox, the Public Information Officer for Project 180, and we, we really kind of rely on her to tell us, you know, is there going to be a project working through there? And are you talking about for future events?
This event we have right here particularly--
Okay. This year, it's not, this year, it's not going to affect their staging area, no.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
I really would like to say, you know, we've met, Josh has done a fantastic job with this. We've met with the organizers, almost beginning as early as right after the parade finished last year. And, you know, this is always a little bit complicated because it's right during the middle of a business day, down Broadway and down into Brick Town. I think we've done the best we could. John's participated in all the meetings as well. I think we've, we've tried to work hard to notify everybody, make sure people are aware. We've reconfigured the staging areas to some extent. I think the alleys are going to stay open, which I was happy to see.
And actually Robinson as well. That'll be a change from this year, and I actually had a traffic control meeting with Oklahoma County yesterday and Oklahoma City Police. And we're going to make sure that Robinson does stay open until the parade kicks off. Of course, whenever, whenever that happens, they'll need to fill Robinson and Seventh, and then head out to Broadway. So, so Robinson will be open, and the alley on the, I guess, behind the businesses on the west side of Broadway.
Great. And just, you know, so that our citizens are aware, during that timeframe from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock, it's extremely difficult to move east to west in downtown Oklahoma City. So stay far west or stay far east, and everybody be safe and enjoy the parade.
Lots of parking, lots of viewers.
I'm all for approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight I, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
Move your strike.
Second.
Cast your votes. Item is struck. Item eight J, understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Ready to go on this one? How about a motion then to move it forward?
Move the item?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine is items from council. James, you want to get us started? All right, Ed?
Just wanted to say goodbye to our planning director, whose last meeting is today, Russell Claus. He has a going-away function at the museum on Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00. This is a loss that I'm going to personally grieve for quite a while. I have significant personal sadness, just as a person, as a friendship, and for the city. I came to Russell in the beginning, asking for ways to influence public health, mental health, the health and happiness of the city. And I knew that our happiness is defined by our daily experience in life, and our physical health, and our community not being isolated from one another, but nobody really showed me how planning can influence all those things in our built environment the way that Russell did. And I think that it was his, it's his worldview, his exposure to so many cities within America and in the world that was really the greatest asset, maybe, and will be a loss for the city. He understood, because he got to see in other cities, things that we're trying to do here play out, he's, he got to see what happens decades later. So I think he understood intuitively where we were trying to go, with things like transit and neighborhood revitalization that were, were kind of in our infancy here as a city. And I've been blessed and been able to visit some cities throughout the world, but I didn't really understand. I wasn't able to connect the dots until Russell showed me that this idea, that we, this wholesale decay of areas of cities is inevitable, is really an American myth. It's really happens in America in a way that doesn't happen in other cities in the world. And he's, he's really opened my eyes to that, and he's done everything he could to try and fight that, to fight neighborhood blight and neighborhood revitalization. His ideas on neighborhood revitalization resonated throughout the community, and he had widespread support and admiration throughout the city. I cherished all the conversations I had with him, where he, he was very convincing in that if you have unequal availability of services in areas of the city due to social and income inequality, then you're basically going to intensify every modern social problem that we have. Poor health, violence, lack of community life, lower trust, educational attainment, teen pregnancy, mental health, all of it. He was great at trying to get the most out of limited funds, using revolving loans instead of grants, like the more revitalization funds and working with CHODO programs. I think the greatest compliment I can give him is that when I, when I, when I see my children, I want to expose them to planning. I want to expose other children to planning. I would, I would say to those who are visiting, to look at planning as a, as a career, as planning as a way that influences our daily happiness and our, and our health. And as a final testament, that we would rally around the comprehensive plan that was, that he worked so hard, and that we would adhere to it. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Had the privilege, as many of the council did yesterday, to attend the legislative conference that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. There were four individuals who spoke during that conference, and at the end, each was given two minutes to kind of summarize his feeling and comments. And Representative Scott Inman was there, and in his comments, I took note of the fact that he was very proud, he said, to be a citizen of Oklahoma City. His area covers Dale City, but it also covers part of Pete Ward's, Pete, excuse me, White's award, and it was very complimentary about Councilman White and his efforts. And he had some comments for us as a city that I thought needed to be passed along to our viewers, and that was that he said that he wished that the state would take a look at what Oklahoma City had done with coming up with a vision a number of years ago. at what Oklahoma City had done with coming up with a vision a number of years ago for infrastructure improvement, going to the voters and asking them to invest in our city through the original MAPS One Cent tax, and then making sure through the collaboration of the city folks, the council, and the business community, to see that those projects were done and produced the results that they were looking for. And he complimented, I think, Oklahoma City on our MAPS projects, and it was very gratifying to hear that compliment. And I think we should take pride, Jim, in passing along to your staff their role in making sure that those projects were built on time and in their budget. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete?
Representative Inman, this is my ward. He's a constituent.
He mentioned, I thought I mentioned that.
Well, I didn't, he mentioned he lived in Fordville, I mean, in Oklahoma City. He represents the bulk of Dale City, but he probably needs a stop sign or something. If he's saying really nice things about me, he's probably, he probably needs a stop sign. He really does a good job, though, and he's very introspective with regard to what goes on at the state and the city level also. I want to just take a minute, I've got something I want to pass out to everybody. What I'm passing out is a copy of a news release, there's one for everybody, from the City of Tulsa Council, and it has to do with what's going on with the rail line between Oklahoma City and Tulsa. There is a proposal pending, and there's bids out right now to sell the line that's owned by the State of Oklahoma between Oklahoma City and Tulsa. Now, as most things like that go, there's all kinds of rumors about how far it'll go. I have heard that one, they are considering selling the spur that is now stayed on that goes to Midwest City, but as part of this package. I'm just hard-pressed to understand why at a time when we're trying as hard as we can to try to institute some rail transit, some meaningful rail transit between Midwest City, Oklahoma City, Edmund, Moore, Norman. ODOT has gone to great expense to have regional meetings and so forth to try to discuss this, that the state would be even thinking about selling right-of-way. I mean, it just makes no sense to me. I have, you know, it's not my first radio with regard to talking about what I believe that ODOT ought to change their name back to the Highway Department, because I don't believe they have a real interest in rail transportation. And I think that is, that's a very short-sighted view, because I think all over the world, not just in, not just in the United States or not just in Oklahoma, but all over the world, people are returning to rail transportation because it's safer, it's more efficient than air transportation. If you subsidize rail the same way you subsidize highways or airlines, you'd be amazed at how much cheaper rail transportation was. But I just, I would like for our staff to look into this potential sale from, and this is a, this is a press release issued by the Tulsa City Council, which laments the fact that this line is being sold. A company has a right at this point to use that line for, it's kind of an excursion route from Tulsa, or actually from Sepulpa to Midwest City. There's questions about whether it should be able to go all the way into Tulsa and should be able to come on into Oklahoma City, but right now it's between Sepulpa and Oklahoma City. The tickets, it's an excursion route, the tickets on it run from $60 or $70 to $200 based on whether you want this luxury meal and ride in a certain car. They plan on running this train four times during February and March on days that the thunder plays. And they sold 700 tickets the first day, the first week. They expected not to do anything like that. And so it does, maybe it's a gimmick, maybe it's an excursion, whatever, but it does show an interest, I think, in people's willingness to take a ride and see what it's like. And for ODOT to be going to sell it, the story is that BNSF wants to buy it because they're going to transport oil on it from the Cushing Refinery, so they need a piece of it to hook with what they've got. And it's already been leased to a company that hauls freight in that area for like 20 years, but they're going to, if this sale goes through, it'll undermine that operation and turn it over to BNSF and eliminate a great deal of the likelihood that something realistic could ever happen between Oklahoma City and Tulsa, at least on that line. It'd have to be, you'd have to start from scratch in order to do it again. I'd just like for us to look into it. Obviously, I have a feeling about it, but I don't want to go too far with it until I have somebody, like some of our staff, look into it to tell us whether or not what, there's been articles in the paper about it, there's, I get emails from the pro-rail people who are all up in arms, and I don't have any reason to doubt that they have a reason to be up in arms, but I'd like a more independent view of it, so.
We'd be happy to contact ACOG and do our own research, then contact ODOT and get their facts and their side of the story and put together information.
By understanding, it's on a very short fuse. The contract, it's an open bid at this point, and the bid closes the end of this month. I don't, you know, I don't know why, it may be too short a fuse to do that, but rather than have this fall back into as just a pure freight line, and there's value in freight transportation, I don't misunderstand that. I don't, I don't, I don't, I have a lack of understanding for that, it's an important function. But, I mean, it's probably too late to do it, but Oklahoma City and Tulsa might be able to put together some kind of a bid to do it. I just hate to see it foreclosed to passenger rail when there appears to be momentum building for a line that'll lease to run to Midwest City from downtown, that kind of stuff, so I just... Anyway, and this press release is interesting. It, if it is true, it points out something that I've felt about ODOT's relationship to rail for a long time, but just have to read it for yourself and have somebody look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. David? Meg?
Mayor, quickly, I just also would like to wish Russell all the best. I've had the opportunity, first as a private citizen when Russell first came to Oklahoma City in 1996, to work with him as part of the Mura Revitalization Program. And I think one of his true gifts to us has been not necessarily what we've seen in public, but a lot of the private, behind-the-scenes things. Russell has an amazing vision for this city, and a lot of things that I think are going to happen in the future have had the seeds planted by a lot of his vision. And we are going to miss him. I hope he will keep following Oklahoma City closely and carefully, and as he, you know, takes on a new career, maybe he'll come back and share some of his knowledge with us. So wish he and his family all the best. Now, the girls are really excited about spending some time with their grandparents in Australia, so it's a great opportunity for them, but we're certainly going to miss him here.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also would like to thank Russell for his service to our city. To add on what Councilman White said about the train, one thing that he didn't get a chance to mention was not only do they plan to take them to Thunder Game by bus, but they're also planning to take them to those passengers to the Adventure District. So I think we still need to continue to talk about the Adventure Mine as well. And I do want to encourage everyone who can to please attend the Martin Luther King Services this weekend. Looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh-huh, Joe, thanks. Pat?
Your Honor, I want to follow up on an expression that City Manager and I had yesterday, brief expression, and that is implementing a commercial paper program to port our GO bond program. We have had difficulty in the last year or two issuing GO bonds because of lack of increased property value. And if we did commercial paper, we, that is sort of a bridge between time we would like to start construction of a project, and by the time the bonds could be sold to support that project. And the initial reaction I got from the manager was, we couldn't do that. But I would like to have our lawyers investigate that issue and find a way to utilize commercial paper or bond program.
The theory is that the interest rates are so low with commercial paper that we could borrow some money at a very low rate, get the construction projects done now, and then as we issue the bonds, you would repay that commercial paper with the bond proceeds. I'd been advised, because we looked into this with the softball Hall of Fame, could we do something like, could we borrow some money and then have that later repaid with GO bonds? And I believe the answer to that was no, but we can further look into that issue.
We can look into it.
I appreciate that, Your Honor. Thank you.
Can I add something on to that? It has been very effective for the Water Trust. I mean, if there's a way to do it, it has been very effective for water infrastructure expansion. Pat and I see that on a regular basis at the Water Trust, and it is very, very helpful in terms of keeping projects moving, getting them started early, saving money. It's really been a great program for us.
Yeah, if nothing else, perhaps we need a GO bond trust to make this thing work. But anyway, I think it's...
I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is...
Well, I do think it's...
We'd be happy to look into that and further...
Because of the, one thing is the success of the process in the Water Department. They've been able to do a really good job managing that program, and they're extending some very low rates in that commercial paper. And this commercial paper would be backed up by a guaranteed flow of money, like the chances are we could probably get a good rate there as well.
Yeah, the issue is the bond issue proceeds act, but we'll explore that with the bond council. All right. City Manager reports.
Thank you. I'd ask Dan Strong to come with us this morning and talk to us a little bit about homelessness. You know, we've done a lot of significant things in Oklahoma City in the last couple of years regarding homelessness. We're not to an ultimate solution. I don't know if we ever get to an ultimate solution. You probably do not. It's a complicated issue. There are a lot of great nonprofit agencies that are working towards this with different pieces, and over the last couple of years, I think we've been able to have better coordination among those groups and provide better resources to our folks. One of the things that Dan does is sends out emails occasionally during inclement weather events and such. I'm probably getting into what Dan's going to talk about, but I was very heartened with the one that he sent last weekend, I guess, the weekend before last when we had the terrible cold snap in, as to the number with that, with that cold swell, severe cold spell that we had in, and the rooms we had and the way we were able to accommodate the homeless population. So with that, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. My name's Dan Strong, founder and director of the Homeless Alliance at 1724 Northwest Fourth Street, and I'm delighted to be here this morning to talk briefly to you specifically about unsheltered homelessness in Oklahoma City. So if you could go to my next slide, you can see, as most of you know, we conduct a census of the homeless population in Oklahoma City annually. This year's census will be January 30th. For the 2013 census, we had a total count of 1,362 homeless people, of whom 288 were unsheltered, so those are folks that are in camps, under bridges, in vacant and dilapidated buildings. Typically nationally, HUD uses a multiplier of 1.5 for your unsheltered homeless count because despite the fact that we do a lot of work gathering intelligence before we go out to count unsheltered homeless, so the assumption is you're missing some. And now we put Oklahoma City's number in January of 2013, about 430. You also see more than a third of our homeless population self-reports mental illness, significantly more than a third are self-reporting substance abuse, and we have about 200 homeless veterans in the city. Next slide, please. So some of you may not know, we have 12 homeless shelters in Oklahoma City. Four large, more or less multipurpose shelters in City Rescue Mission, Jesus House, Grace, and Salvation Army. And then you can see our specialty shelters, and those are much smaller, and they have what amounts to a niche market, a target demographic that they seek to serve. So Sunbeam provides shelter for elderly homeless, and YWCA's Passage Ray Shelter is providing services to victims and survivors of domestic violence. Next slide. So in the community for, gosh, almost seven years now, we have had a collaborative cold weather contingency plan. And I should point out that the Homeless Alliance does not, we are not a funder, and we don't direct the operations of any of our more than 80 nonprofit and faith-based providers. All these things are accomplished through voluntary collaboration. So the four large shelters all participate in our cold weather contingency plan, and it's really very simple. Next slide, please. Each shelter has their own cold weather contingency program, and for some, it's based on the temperature, whether it falls below 32 degrees for two of our shelters, and for some, it's wind chill, 30 degrees of wind chill. Each of the shelters has an internal program where when they reach that temperature, they will do two things: set out more bedding for additional residents, and reduce barriers to entry. So each of our shelters may have bars and bands in place for folks that have been troublesome in the shelter before. None of our shelters allow folks that are actively using to come in, so those barriers to entry are reduced during these cold weather periods. And the shelters, some of them put cots in the gym or mats on the floor, or whatever that is. Next slide, please. So as each of those four individual shelters reach the limit of their contingency capacity, they coordinate through the Homeless Alliance, and we will move people waiting at one shelter where there is no capacity to another shelter where there is capacity. So we have an 18-passenger van that was a gift to us from First Unitarian Church with studded snows that we can move people from between shelters, and we also have an MOU with Airport Express to move folks between shelters. So as the City Manager mentioned, if I can have the next slide, please. Oh, I should say, once the entire system's capacity is full, we can open our day shelter at Third and Virginia. We have about 100 cots and another 100 pallets, so we have a capacity of over 200 in the day shelter for overnight shelter in really bad weather.
Dan, how many times have you done that?
We have never done that. And before the, some of you may remember, before the day shelter was a day shelter, it was a big warehouse, and we had the same plan in effect when it was just a warehouse, and we never opened it, we've never had to open it then either. So there's enough extensible capacity within the system that we've never reached that point, but if we ever need to, we could. So next slide. On the front end, with weather forecasting as it is now, we know when cold weather's coming, and often we have lots of prior notice. And so there is an agency in Oklahoma City called Be The Change, whose mission is to reach out to unsheltered homeless people. They're out every week, but prior to big cold snaps, they and their volunteers will go out every day to try and find campers and try to encourage them to come in when the weather gets bad. So next slide. And as the City Manager mentioned, our last really bad cold snap, which was a week ago, Sunday, January 5th, when it got down into single digits, this was our contingency capacity in Oklahoma City. Salvation Army was their regular capacity was full, and they had 26 on cots in the gym. Jesus House, regular capacity full, and they had 14. Grace Rescue in the Stockyards was full, but they didn't have anyone going into contingency overflow, and the City Rescue actually had empty regular beds, almost 100 of them. So part of that, part of that low usage of our cold weather contingency was just the date. It was January 5th. Many of you know SSI and SSDI pay on the 3rd, and it's common for unsheltered homeless that are receiving those government transfer payments. that are receiving those government transfer payments to take a few of their friends and check into a motel when they have that cash. But as you remember, that cold snap lasted four days, and the numbers stayed fairly steady. Jesus House at one point got up to 20 in overflow. City never got completely full, nor did Grace. So the plan's obviously working. It's a short-term response to unsheltered homelessness, and as a community, we have a longer-term response that I'd also like to speak about briefly. If you go to the next slide, please. That's the 100,000 Homes Program. It's really a year old this month. It is focused on chronically homeless, medically vulnerable, unsheltered people in Oklahoma City. So next slide, please. It came about in part because of a study that the city conducted in 2010, looking at the cost of homelessness, where we found in that study year that we spent, as a community, $11 million outside the continuum of care for the homeless. So $11 million in what we call non-traditional providers, which is police, fire, IMSA, County Jail, hospitals, and emergency rooms. Next slide, please. Most of those costs are incurred by chronically homeless, unsheltered people. And in fact, during the study period, just looking at one chronically homeless, medically vulnerable, unsheltered person, we found that he incurred total costs in one year of $160,000. And not one dime of that came from traditional homeless providers. He was never in a shelter. He was-- he never received mental health care from an MI provider or substance abuse provider. It was all hospitals, fire, police, IMSA, and County Jail. Next slide, please. So in January of last year, we began working with this Housing First approach of taking chronically homeless, medically vulnerable, unsheltered people, people like Floyd that are incurring huge costs to the system, and putting them directly into housing and wrapping them around with the services that enable them to sustain that housing. Next slide, please. Other communities that have implemented Housing First have found significant savings through that program. Next slide, please. Again, Homeless Alliance, we don't control anybody's money. We don't really get to tell anybody what to do. So what we have to do is build collaborative efforts to make these things happen. And for 100,000 homes, with more than 40 government, faith-based, and nonprofit providers that are actively participating, these are not entities that sign the letter of support. These are entities that are putting money, or people, or housing into the effort. Next slide, please. So we started with the count in January and started actively housing people in February in the national program to get to the front rank of the 400 or so cities that are participating. They ask you to set a goal of housing 2.5% of your homeless population per month, and for us, that would be seven a month. Next slide, please. These are some of the folks that we have housed, before and after pictures, if you will. So our goal to get into the front rank in the national campaign was 84 people housed in 2013. As of December 31st, we had housed 217, roughly tripled the national goal. This initiative has succeeded beyond our wildest dreams, and we have a 98% housing retention rate. That is, of the folks that we have housed, all but six of them are still housed. Two passed away, and as we prioritize the folks that we put into housing by the most medically vulnerable first, it's perhaps not surprising that we lost a couple. You know, at some level, that's a positive outcome. Those folks died in their own place with a door that locks in their own bed, the roof over their heads, and some level of simple human dignity that they did not have on the streets. So two have been evicted for misbehaviors, but that doesn't kick them out of the program. Now we're looking for a more appropriate housing option for those two. And one reconnected with family and moved to Michigan to be with his family. So next slide, please. What we have found through this program, we have used for 217 people to be housed, current housing assets. So there's been no new housing to get this far. But what we have found was, for some folks that have very significant disabilities, putting them into an apartment, even if they're going to be visited once a day or by a case manager, it's just not quite enough structure for them to be successful. So we have developed a new project, next slide, please, to be placed on our campus to put together 20 units of what's called single-room occupancy housing. SRO housing is even less than an efficiency. So these little apartments will be about 250 square feet. They don't really have a kitchenette. They have a, like a dorm fridge and a microwave. There's no stove top, and it's staffed. So next slide, please. That's what it'll look like on the campus. Next slide, please. You can see 20 units. The whole thing is only about 8,500 square feet, so the units are very small. There's two congregate areas, and there's new funding from HUD available, and we'll probably make those two congregate areas tornado-proof. Next slide, please. And then you can see how these apartments are. They're very tiny, undercounted refrigerator, little small microwave, really just room for bed and seating area. Next slide, please. So that SRO project, the capital costs are being funded, $600,000 in federal home funds, and then further $500,000 from private donors here in Oklahoma City. Next slide, please. It will require a change to our PUD for the West Town campus, so we're going through that process now. You can see the star in the middle of that is the SRO project, and the blue circle is the 300-foot notification requirement, which is only like eight properties, and three of those are me. So we expanded our neighborhood notification to go south to Maine, west to Penn, east to Blackwelder, and north to Lynwood, so we could, working with Georgie Rasko, have a better idea of really what our neighborhood is. That took the notification from eight to 255. So we're having our first neighborhood meeting Thursday evening, and looking forward to that, and then a follow-up meeting on Tuesday. Next slide, please. The operating funding for the SRO project going forward, you know, it's one thing to get these things built, and it's another thing to run them. We have worked with Oklahoma City Housing Authority, which has been just a vital partner in the 100,000 Homes Program, to make this project a project-based rental assistance, which essentially means every unit that is occupied is generating $585 per month in revenue. So assuming it stays full, which it will, that's about $130,000 in revenue annually, which will defray the costs of staffing. Next slide. Any questions I can answer for you all about unsheltered homelessness?
I've got just a quick question. Dan, the point in time survey is got a reputation for not being the most accurate thing in the world. Has HUD established a multiplier that would apply to the entire survey number?
Well, they have two multipliers, the 1.5 for unsheltered and 1.7 for veterans. Those are the only subcategories that I'm aware of that they have multipliers for.
In a meeting several years ago, I was told if you multiply that number by two, you'd get a better feel for how many homeless people we actually had.
Yeah, I would say we're very accurate on the sheltered count these days, partly because many of our shelters have software systems in place. Unsheltered is just, it's just really hard, you know? If a family is staying in their car at a Walmart parking lot, and we don't know about it, we can't count them.
The second question is, and I think it's an important thing to focus on, is the cost of homeless. $160,000 a year for that one individual racked up. Do we have any way to track what that cost is doing, if it's going down as a result of your efforts?
We absolutely do. Donna Rich, who's the director for planning at HUD, is actually interested-- this just worked out for us-- is a doctoral student, and her PhD dissertation is on the cost savings of this initiative in Oklahoma City. So we have a lot of data. One of the folks we showed there, Jim Bug, had 31 ambulance-police calls in the year prior to being housed in February, and 11 hospital stays, 25 emergency room visits in the year prior. He has had zero since he has been housed in the 11-month post. And we're trying to get that data on every person that we're housing.
That's good, because I know in Phoenix, they had the million-dollar bond, they called it. The city of Phoenix identified one individual whose cost maintained that individual, emergency room visits, whatever, was over $1 million.
I will say, in giving a presentation similar to this to the senior management at Oklahoma City Police Department, when I got to that slide, Steve McCool asked, "Is that Floyd?" And in fact, it is Floyd. And Steve said in that meeting that he had been a police officer for 20 years, and his first arrest in Bricktown was Floyd for vagrancy. So, you know, we've left Floyd on the streets for 20 years, and if he's even come close to costing what he cost in 2010, you know, we spent a couple million dollars on that guy, and we could have housed him for a tenth of that, a twentieth of that.
I mean, this project doesn't work for everybody, but for those that it works for, it works beautifully.
Absolutely. And I would hasten to point out, we have great service providers that are doing really wonderful work in moving economically disadvantaged people out of homelessness and into being productive citizens. And that's easily 80% of our community's homeless population. For that relatively small minority, that 20% that are seriously, seriously ill with mental illness or substance abuse or other issues that prevent them from becoming productive, we can at least avoid costs, and it just so happens there's also the most humane way to do it. So that's kind of a win-win-win.
If I could just a couple of comments, Dan. I want to thank you, and please pass along your thanks to your staff at both the day shelter and the resource center. We're getting great results out of that, and I think, you know, most people remember that we had a shelter years ago, our day shelter, called Rest, but it closed in 1996, if I'm correct, and we haven't had one until the West Town campus opened. And so it's a huge gift to the city that we've been able to do that, and the work you all are doing are fantastic. You assisted Debbie Martin and myself a couple of months ago bring together, I think there were 80 people in that room, 80 of our service providers, to have a summit on homelessness. And I think some great ideas and comments came from that, that Debbie has captured in written form. And moving into the new year, I'd like to ask at least a portion of those folks to come back and see if we can really put together a plan. You know, I think we have the problem citywide. Ward 6 is certainly very impacted by the unsheltered and the walking population, and that seems to be what really is getting the attention of our citizens. So the 100,000 Homes is an amazingly wonderful program, and I'm so happy to see the success that you've had, and I just appreciate the work that you're doing. I'm very glad to see you collaborating with Georgie and reaching out to those neighbors because it is a significant issue in the class in Ten Pen, kind of West Town campus neighborhood. So I look forward to attending at least one of those meetings with you, and I know Debbie's going to join and be there as well. So thank you so much for your work.
It's my pleasure.
Dan, I also want to express my appreciation for what you do.
I think it's a great service, and I think this is the best opportunity Oklahoma City has to really get to the heart of this problem. I'm surprised at the one statistic that you said, that 20% of the people are chronically mentally ill or on substance abuse. I would have thought the number was greater than that.
The numbers of homeless folks that self-report mental illness or substance abuse are much higher than that. As you know from your work at First Steps, some folks, some folks get better quicker, are more compliant with treatment regimens, those sorts of things. And the minority, that 20%, is that folks, those folks that have been unsuccessful in accessing available treatment options. So folks like, that are just chronic, chronic alcoholics that have-- Jim Bug's been through the referral center like three times, and it just sometimes, you know, it doesn't take.
Right. But most people, my experience has been that most people that go into any kind of a recovery program that don't succeed, most people that are in one recovery program and that succeed in that one, it may have been the second or the third time they've made a run at it. The kind of AA principle about don't quit before the miracle happens is part of what I think you guys bring to the table, that you just stay at it.
Absolutely. So Jim Bug is housed now, and he's much better. He's drinking a lot less, but he's still drinking. And as a consequence, his case managers are talking to him two, three, four times a week about, "In the time we put down the bottle, how about we go to the referral center? How about we go to First Step?" But if he says no, we don't put him out. Because if he's going to pass out, I'd rather have him dead in his own little home than on Lynwood.
Right. But the, I guess, that concern is that, about how much mental health treatment actually goes on, because it seems to me that, I mean, there's a lot of socioeconomic things and alcoholism for people that are maybe don't have a mental disability, but it seems to me that the real hardcore problem is the fact that we don't really, and the whole nation doesn't have a real comprehensive way to deal with the walking wounded in the mentally ill. I mean, you have to be severely mentally ill before you can avail yourself of permanent treatment. And the rest of the people that have the kind of mental illness that drives them to addiction or just homelessness, not addiction, but just homelessness, seems to me to go untreated or not as well-treated as it might be.
I would certainly agree with that. Now, in 100,000 homes, we hope Community Services, Red Rock Behavior, Health, North Care, all players, but yeah, we're kind of limited. For some folks, like Jim Bug, whom I would say would be a perfect candidate for adult protective services, they're just not, and you have to have a gun to your own head, a knife to your own throat before they will get involved, and there's good reasons for that. But getting mental health treatment, especially for the floridly psychotic, can be really challenging. If you can get it, it works way better if they're housed.
Yeah, those people, say-- And probably more of them were institutionalized than needed to be. But they weren't, they weren't released for that reason. They were released because it saved the government a lot of money just to let them go, they thought. But the long-term is that just the opposite is happening. It's costing more and people's lives are at risk and they're probably in more miserable conditions than they would have been in many cases had they been institutionalized. So, the emphasis on mental health, to me, is the big piece of what you do. I mean, symptoms are alcoholism, drug use, no job, kids abandoned, all those kinds of things. But the underlying cause, it's always, I've always believed it's the mental health piece of it. And I appreciate the fact you spend that much time as you can on that aspect of the problem.
Yes.
Mayor, in November, I had the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities and I went to a session on homelessness. And I had three observations that came out of that. One is, this is hard. There's not a silver bullet. There's a lot of approaches. Dan has taught me that most of his clients aren't there for a single problem. They're there for multiple problems. And sometimes the one problem leads and causes another problem, which causes another problem as it goes on. And there are complications and it's hard and they oftentimes need a lot of social agencies or a lot of help to get through these issues. Number two, though, was interesting, is that as they were going through the best practices, I was sitting there listening, ready to take notes and write down what we need to do. And it was really more checkmarks on things that we're doing here that the others are doing. I didn't come back with saying, "This is what we need to do." Now, that doesn't mean we can't put more resources in. That doesn't mean that we, you know, that we can't do a better job and that there's still people hurting. But overall, there aren't any glaring things that people are doing out there that we are not doing. And thirdly, my third observation was that the faith-based organizations in Oklahoma City have a much more significant presence than you find in other cities. I don't, can't really tie that down, but that was certainly my impression because most of the cities that we're presenting were not talking about the assistance from the faith-based, faith-based organizations. So, those are my three observations from National League of Cities.
Yeah, Claire, then, yes?
Dan, I appreciate what you're doing. A couple of questions. I get a lot of pressure, and I'm sure the other council members do from time to time, about panhandling. The panhandlers that are on the streets, this little thing that you handed out, how about giving our viewers just a quick synopsis of how this could help not only the panhandling situation, but the lives of the individuals who are doing it?
Sure. So, what you have, we call them real change vouchers. Our idea is that if when you see a panhandler, rather than giving that panhandler a dollar, you give them a real change voucher. We did a study, it's outdated now, it was in 2007, but we interviewed, that's a couple of hundred panhandlers. And we found that relatively few, only about 20%, were actually homeless. 80% were panhandling for cash, often to support unhealthy behaviors due to their addictions. And so, if you were, if you were giving cash to a panhandler, you might be contributing to their self-destruction. So, we developed this tool, the real change vouchers. And inside each voucher is, has the street addresses of two of our big shelters and the West Town Homeless Resources Campus. The back of the voucher is a bus route map to those and the end of the voucher is a bus pass. So, if you give one to a panhandler and it's a person who is genuinely in need and you give them one of those, you've given them access to where at least some of those needs can be met. We, the Homeless Alliance developed the tool. We get the printing and the graphic design donated, but the bus tickets cost us a buck apiece, which is a smoking-good deal. And so, we sell them on our website for $5 for a book of five.
Now, one of the suggestions, if you read the editorial page within the last month, I learned to the editors said, "What we should do is we should start fining people who give money to panhandlers." Do you have any comments on that particular? I don't know if that was on your checklist or not, Jim, but...
You know, certainly, Councilman, I appreciate the sentiment. As a, more fundamentally, you know, at some level, what a panhandler is doing is soliciting a charitable donation. And it doesn't, doesn't seem entirely appropriate to me for government to get in the middle of that. I think this is a market-based solution and if we had appropriate market penetration, you know, if every third person driving around Oklahoma City had one of those in their, in their car, you wouldn't see panhandling. It would no longer be economically remunerative because all you, instead of money, you'd be getting those things. And that's, that's the way to handle, and panhandling is a, it's a commercial transaction. And using market economic forces to control a commercial transaction is the way to go. You don't, you don't need a government intervention. That's just my opinion.
And another market-driven operation that's going on, I had these two young people on my TV show, was the Curbside Chronicle. How about giving a commercial on that?
Excuse me. Yeah, The Curbside Chronicle is Oklahoma City's street magazine. It is the brainchild of two college people. I come this close to saying kids every time. Quitley O'Connor, who's a senior at Vanderbilt University, and Runya Forgotson, who is a senior in the College of Business at OU. They developed this idea, brought it to us about a year ago. I thought it was crazy and it's, it's really taken off. The magazine is a, half the content is sort of general interest. There's restaurant reviews, that sort of thing. Half the content is about homeless issues. And of the content that's about homeless issues, most of it is written by local homeless individuals here in Oklahoma City. So, provides a really interesting perspective. Moreover, the business piece of it is we recruit and train vendors from our homeless community to be the people who sell and distribute the magazine. And they make, they make 75 cents a copy for those that they sell. A couple of our vendors have already earned enough in selling the magazine to get their own fair market housing, private market housing. One has actually not only gotten his own housing, but opened a small business, a little art gallery over on MLK. And he was featured in a story. So, it, yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice little business with social impact.
Ed? Well, I also want to thank you for your service and echo Pete's comments that I think a lot of what you're treating is the symptom. And that if the deficiency, again, like Pete was saying, is in mental health and addiction services in our healthcare system. I mean, nobody should get the idea that because people are going through the referral multiple times, that that's treatment, that's detox for seven days. We don't have what you really need to transition people to long-term recovery, which is 90-day treatment programs, long-term treatment programs, long-term maintenance programs. It's a major deficiency of our healthcare delivery system in Oklahoma City, despite the fact that we have record amounts of physical and sexual violence towards children, domestic violence, addiction. And all those mental health issues are not being treated. And then, I think you're dealing with the consequences. So, until we decide to start investing in rehabilitating human beings on a larger scale, I think you'll continue to see the consequences. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions for Dan? All right, Dan, we appreciate your work.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh. Anybody signed up for Citizens to Be Heard today? All right, I guess we're done. We're adjourned.